We're calling the meeting of the Board of Selectmen on the 10th of October to order. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, well, hang on, you're on for 7:15.
15, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that then, just in case somebody wants to show up. All right, first approval is a bill for 315 from Yankee Engineering and Testing for the Town Hall, and this to be paid out of the municipal building. We've paid the other ones out of that.
Motion to approve.
Any comments or questions?
I thought they were done with the, that stuff.
No, this was one last.
The curatorial building?
This was testing the curing of the pad, and I think that is the last thing. They had done the compaction testing, but this was the one last bit.
Really back to the curatorial building pad, right?
No, I think this was the curatorial building pad.
I made the motion.
Okay, second?
I seconded it.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next order of business is to declare a special town meeting and to open up the warrant for said meeting. The meeting to be held on December 11th, 2017, at 7:00 PM at Berlin Memorial School. The warrant will open tonight, and the warrant for this meeting will close on Monday, October 23rd, so that's two weeks, right?
Yes.
People, two weeks, yep, good. At 8:00 PM. All articles in their final form must be in the hands of Selectmen at that time. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I do have one thing that could be a placeholder, perhaps. I don't know whether you want to talk about it now, or do you want to just go down this?
Let's open it up first, so we have a meeting to talk about, and then we can talk about it.
All right. So, I made the motion, didn't I?
I seconded it, right?
I think so.
Close enough.
Okay, now we have done it again.
Yeah, all right. Any other comments or questions at this point? All right, is hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I don't think there's anything to sign yet.
No, 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 it's the two things that stuck together, and I thought there was something to sign at the back of that package. Okay, the next, oh, do you want to talk about?
It's up to you.
Yeah, let's talk about it, yeah.
I can talk about it now or later with my updates. We, Keith and Liz and I met to go over, you know, suggestions from the highway employees, and I just wanted to state that if they do ratify, you know, we may need to add something to the special town meeting warrant. It was suggested by the attorney.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure what, or if.
Is this a fiscal matter, or a rule, or what?
No, it would be a fiscal matter, I guess, a budgetary.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm asking, whether it has budgetary impact, or whether it's something else.
Right.
Okay?
That's it.
All right, well, two weeks from yesterday, we need to.
Firm something up, and I'm hoping we'll hear something, but I have not heard anything yet.
And, I mean, we can put something, it would be in final form, we can put something on the.
Right.
On the warrant that says we appropriate an amount, we just have to be sure that the amount that's going to come in will be within it, so even if we don't have an absolute final figure, we could put something on.
Okay.
Okay.
I will try to get in touch and see if I hear anything more, and maybe we can finalize something or not.
Okay. All right, you can bird dog that one, and as I say, anytime before that.
Okay.
We have a program department request form. This is a Board of Selectmen request, is that right, to support the administration of the department, is that okay?
Filing, organization.
Okay.
Burning stuff.
Burning stuff. Okay, do we need a motion for this?
Yeah, I think so.
Motion to approve the request for a work-off person for the Selectmen's office.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Agreed.
Absolutely, I think.
Can we tie it to a specific applicant?
We can.
Do we have to?
Has somebody applied for this?
Yeah.
Okay, and?
Former Selectman Judy Booman.
Okay.
At least for the time being, maybe another, in the future point in time, too, but she's expressed an interest in coming in and helping organize.
We don't have to do any posting of this for that?
No, no, it's marrying someone's skill set as an applicant to fit jobs' requirements.
Okay.
And so in this case, and some of it is, you know, town history, and it happened during her tenure, she brings a certain skill set that's going to be helpful for the job.
I don't have any difficulty with that.
I don't think you can find somebody much more qualified for this.
Do you want me to amend it to include Judy's name?
I'd accept that amendment, and to appoint Judy Booman to fill that work-off position.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, which is to create the position and to populate it with Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Confirmation of the liaison assignments, I thought they were fine. Mine, I'm sorry, mine went.
You had comments?
I did have a suggestion.
Okay.
The superintendent's search committee is, I believe, we're finished, we've done our job.
Okay.
If you wanted to put something general, like schools.
Okay.
That's fine, and if there's something that comes up with schools and someone else wants to do it, that's fine with me, too. I also was wondering whether the Economic Development Committee should go with Planning Board, which would be Tom.
Yeah, I don't mind.
And that was it, really?
Okay.
It's basically the same from the one you sent me, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I didn't look at the new one tonight, I was just looking up.
It's hers, I printed it out in front of the table.
Okay. All right, so that was my only suggestion.
All right, and I presume you were okay with it, because you compiled it?
Yep.
All right.
All right, you were okay with it?
I said, I'd looked at mine, and, yeah.
Questions from last week, so.
So, we're making those two adjustments, did somebody take those down? Did you take them down?
Yeah.
All right, then.
Do you want these up online, too, perhaps, or do you want that?
Yeah, that was sort of the idea, was we'd get it solid, and it could go up online.
I'll put on the Selectmen, I'll put on the Selectmen's page, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw this.
Yeah, that seems a place to put it.
Great, well, I didn't know they did that, good.
Do we need to notify our own groups of people, or?
I can do that, too.
Okay.
No, I mean, every.
Or if they happen to look online, they'll know.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could send it around, but I think most of these are actually quite active, for instance, for me, you know, the fire and the accountant are very active, the Town Hall Committee, Rail Trail knows that, but, you know, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
So.
Do we need a motion?
Motion to approve this, accept.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So that's approved with the few little changes that we just discussed. Come on down.
We need the town clerk. I think she's in the Energy Committee meeting.
She is.
Let me grab her.
Hey, can I help you, is there anything?
This is Beth Stor, she's on the Town Management. This is Chris Keefe, and Tom Andrew.
Hi.
And have you met Dennis? Our town president, Dennis. Been in passing.
Yep.
Yeah, so, it's really, it's actually really relaxing and inspiring to watch you guys work. It's so nice, you just, it's really mellow and calm, and you just go through the thing and you do it, and you go.
Yep, it hasn't always been mellow and calm on the Board of Selectmen.
I can get started without Eloise.
Yeah, whatever, it's your show, so.
Yep, basically, last year, we went out to borrow, we did two separate borrowings, one for the ladder truck and one for the new highway barn. We did a last-minute, second borrowing to borrow the complete amounts approved at the town meeting, thinking that the town bond would be finished sooner than it appears it will be, so there's kind of a lag there that we're concerned about. The ladder truck will have its first payment made with the transactions that we're doing here, it's in this year's budget.
Yep.
It's roughly $112,000 plus a little bit of interest, and this will be another ban, we're going to extend it for another year. The rates, I talked to the financial advisor, they seem to be still pretty flat. I sent you the thing to kind of see it, there was one over 3%, the rest were under 2% and in the mid-2s, so it's, and this particular ban was won by TD Bank, and it was 1.23%, which is still pretty decent.
Yep.
And I think it was a little bit less than the last one, that was small, so, for the 1.75. Anyhow, we'll probably do our final borrowing next November, and one of the promises we made to the voters was that the bulk of the debt won't hit till the 20 budget. 19 is the last year that this building is paid off.
Right.
It's in the, I think it's $165,000 plus $8,000 in interest, that's going to go, or 16, sorry, and also, the first big loan that we took out for WPAT, which is about $7,800 a year, disappears in 19 as well, so that can be added to, you know, debt going away, and we're looking at, I believe, at the 200 and something, I have it here somewhere, new debt in '20, so that's where we're at.
So, we'll be retiring a current 160-something.
I think it's 165, the last.
Yep, plus another, WPAT was what?
Roughly 7,800.
7,800, okay.
Yeah, there's still 2,100 on that second WPAT, and that finishes two years later, so we're in really good shape.
Yep.
I saw a.
It's for the septic loans.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it's, there's no interest, it comes from.
That was the only acronym I just did, I don't know.
So, basically, what.
Water pollution abatement interest.
We're here tonight is to ask you to vote for, and then, you know, do all these, everywhere it's orange, is where you guys get to sign, so.
Oh, boy.
And then, of course, you know, it'll be federalled out tomorrow to the Department of Revenue, and once they go, we'll be in good shape. I was a little nervous about making payments the same day that the money came in, I guess that's how bands work, but UniBank is going to take care of the whole thing, so, you know, I can sleep at night now.
Good.
Not missing a payment, because if a wire comes back, it's like, it's easy to do, so, having said that, if you have any questions, or?
No.
No, sounds good.
Don't you have to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're about to do that.
You're contemplating.
I was just contemplating how to make the motion, I was off for a moment.
Right.
I.
We'll give him the documents, so he has.
Yeah, that may be helpful.
All right, that is the actual, the rest of this is just. Oops.
All right. All right, I move to approve the borrowing, it is in the amount of the face value here, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason that's less is because.
Yeah, so I was slightly.
The line item in the debt from this year's budget covers the $112 for the fire truck, plus the two interest payments.
Okay.
So those will be wired to UniBank before they pay off the original bands.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, it's in this week's payables coming up.
Okay, all right, then, yeah, sorry, that's why I looked at the figure, it was different, I wanted to be sure I was going to say it right, okay. I move that we approve the borrowing in the amount of $4,264,067, with an interest rate of 1.23% per annum, and it's the maturity is next November, is that right?
Yes.
November 1st?
Yes.
With a maturity of November 1st, 2018.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, now we start to sign.
Yep.
Yep.
You're, you're the color yellow.
That's a nice color.
I read out of arrows.
Goes with my outfit, that's acceptable.
And just the orange, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, that's just a fact sheet that, and these go with it, too. Basically, these go to the IRS for the tax exempt part.
Right, okay.
Okay, there's one more for Lisa, right there.
And those are.
You want to sign here, Tom?
Sure.
Just to remind you of buying your first house.
Actually, I was thinking, it makes me nauseous, I normally make Tim Wright Big checks out, because the whole idea of that amount of money makes me nauseous, and this actually does the same thing.
And the scary part, we don't have the 4.2 right now.
Okay, one more. I think that's it.
Yep. On the costs that we'll hit.
They don't make that any too easy, do they?
No.
The cost that we'll hit next year is $52,000, of that roughly, 48 is for the highway barn.
Yep.
So it's, you know, as we promised, there'd be a little hit for the interest, but the big money won't hit till '20.
Yep, that's great, no, and it's a very reasonable interest rate, really.
The other thing we're going to have to decide, and we'll do that next November, is, as I mentioned in the email, is more and more towns going 30 years on these loans, and not all of them are in the 20 or 30 million, they're down into 8 and 7, and, which is kind of interesting. Most of them are term loans, with some years they don't want to make payments, but anything we decide on, we have to deduct the two years that we've done band, so if we want to go 22 years, we'll net 20 on the final borrowing, because of that new law that we kind of, Ellie and I, don't really think going 30 years is smart, but.
You have to, you have to work the numbers.
Yeah, we'll run scenarios next, probably September, we'll get a jump on it.
It would be more helpful if they said, keep it within X amount of money. It would be more helpful if they.
Who's they?
Finance Committee, Selectmen, said, you know, this is the amount of money, keep it within this, then you can play around, because.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I understand that, it is kind of a chicken and egg thing, you know, until you see what the cost of putting it out for another 10 years is.
And sometimes you get a better interest rate.
In terms of interest rate, it's hard to make a decision to, you know, keep it within a certain amount, because if you're paying.
No, but usually, you know what your line item is, that you, you know, you only want it, or you don't want it more than $300,000 or $400,000.
And what I'm saying is.
So you need to settle that, because other than that, it's the treasurer's discretion.
Right, no, I mean, we need to talk, all I was saying was, if we make a, you know, if we make a statement we want to keep it below $400,000, and that causes us to go out 30 years, and it, you know, doubles the annual interest expense, I don't, you know, I mean, I might not want to do that.
I know, but when you're initially looking at it, though, that something like that is helpful.
Yeah, okay.
It's just a parameter, and then you can say, hey, that doesn't work.
Mm-hmm.
Looking good, I'll make a copy for everybody.
All righty.
And I think that's it.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Both of you.
Okay, the next item of business is the creation of an IT Advisory Committee. The proposed mission statement is, the mission of the committee is to advise the Board of Selectmen and the town on all aspects of information technology, including hardware, software, social media, and security, and to proactively lead the town in developing and implementing an information technology strategy. The committee will remain a permanent standing committee of five members appointed at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. Sounds good to me.
Sounds fine to me.
Do you want to speak to it?
Oh, I just, I think I'd mentioned this before, I think that we need to pay more attention to our software, hardware, all of the things mentioned there, and have an actual strategy within the town for replacement, security, all of these things, and I think that Tom Galvin would very much appreciate help in that respect, because he's taking on a lot of that right now.
He has seen this, and?
Oh, yeah, I talked extensively to him before.
Okay, and he's okay?
Well, he hadn't seen the exact outline of the committee, but we talked about, when I talked to him last week.
Yes, I mean, we had talked about this before, and indicated, we thought it was a good idea, so I would accept a motion to create a committee and to adopt the mission and description as presented to the meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
Question, three-year terms, one-year terms?
It would be the same as the rest of our advisory committees, so it would be one-year.
I brought a note about that. Do you think advisory committees are uniformly one-year or three-years as a standing?
I think we generally appoint them every year.
One-year.
Yeah.
And do you care if they're residents or not, or town employees or not? The last time we did the data study committee, you specifically did not want town employees.
Right, I think, I don't have any strong feelings here, and I don't think we have to establish a policy on that, we can, we're going to vote to appoint people, so.
Okay, so it has been sort of tried before?
Well, that was to decide whether to, how to change the structure of the prior data systems coordinator, and it ended up just being a changed appointment and a change in vendors, ultimately, if you remember.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, all I, and what I was responding to was whether somebody has to be a town resident, voter, whatever, I think, I don't think I feel strongly in that, and we have the power of appointments, so.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it?
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
All right.
So I think I made the motion, she seconded it.
Should we vote? Well, why don't we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, this seems to be the hard part tonight.
I know.
Remembering whether we voted or not, yeah.
I think he said, is there anything else to be said, and Mary had something to say.
Yeah. We're easily distracted tonight, I guess, aren't we? All right. Next is the online version of the 2016 Annual Town Report. Lisa, do you want to talk about that?
I managed to recreate the town report, but since I did not have the files that had been put together as the town report, I used it as an opportunity to sort of show where we could go with the town report. The information is exactly the same as it was, it's just in a slightly different format, and things are rearranged a little bit, but you can search online, so that should not be an issue. Things are alphabetized where they weren't, things are grouped by categories where they weren't, so.
I should have asked Ellie to stay and talk to that. Eloise says that the Annual Town Report is a document when created, and that it's already been filed in multiple places as the 2016 Annual Town Report, so, she didn't really, she thought it would be good to say a template, or, you know, a blueprint, and what the future ones could look like, but that maybe, it may not be a good idea to label it the 2016 Annual Town Report, because it varies from what was sent to the voters' households, and what's on file with the state, Clinton District Court, and, you know, et cetera.
Probably just cause a little confusion for some people.
I do think you can call it probably just the online version, because I think a lot of towns actually put more information now in the one that's online than they do otherwise.
Why don't we say unofficial online version? Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
That, I was going to say the same thing, because I knew that, you know, once you have the meeting and everything, things get filed, so.
Yeah.
It's hard, it's easy to do it on a going-forward basis, but it's hard to.
Yeah.
Can you get, like, feedback of any kind? Would it be?
I think that would be great, it's out there for anybody who wants to take a look and maybe make comments, or.
Right, and see if that's where the direction we want to go, I mean.
Yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think there's tons of stuff we can do with it, I just, like, picked and chose a few things while I was going through, so.
Did it take you forever?
Yes, yes, it did.
Oh, jeez.
But now I know exactly how to do it, so, and where the files are, where they come
from, what formats they're coming in. I think we could also probably ask for some things, when we're asking for the files, consistency of font, and some different things that would make the process easier.
Okay.
Okay, do we need a vote on this?
Well, it's already up there.
Yep.
So I think just, be sure we label it, you know, unofficial online version, okay? Okay, number seven is scheduling the Colonial Power Municipal Aggregation RFP schedule. You want to talk about this?
Last time, was in June or July, there was a joint meeting of the Selectmen and the Energy Committee, like, at noon time, to look over the proposals, that led us to the last six-month fair day contract.
Yeah.
I guess we're just coming up on that time again, and they're getting ready to plan. So there's two different dates coming up, there's an October 11th, kind of informational.
That's tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I think this is informational, she didn't say that was required, but there's an actual October 18th window where they're going to get their hard proposals, and we have to make a decision by day's end. I think the timing is slightly different, but I didn't know if the board wanted to jointly meet again, or delegate this decision. It was easy when Judy was one of the same, both the Selectmen and the Energy Committee member, but it's a little different now, and maybe the Energy Committee wants to be involved in that. They were certainly helpful last time.
Or give input?
Yeah, and give input as the proposals come in, because there's only a little window of opportunity to review things.
And what is that date again?
It's October 18th.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
The 18th is when we would have to meet with them?
Yes.
And we did it Wednesday before, too.
Yeah, and we actually had both boards here then.
I've got nothing on that.
Is there a form of this board available to do that?
Yeah, I will not be available that day, I'm down in New York next, I think, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so.
Well, if we were going to do that, Lisa and I were going to do that, I'd feel more comfortable doing it with the Energy Committee.
Or some representation, for the, anyway. Or some representation from them anyway.
They'll float down there and get a consensus. I don't know what they can do.
Tim works in home normally. I can finagle him to be here. As long as I have a haircut at ten-thirty, other than that.
Then what, what was the timeframe again? Three?
One-thirty.
It's in there.
Colonial set up a conference call for one. Final pricing will be due at eleven AM. That's when we get notification.
And then she shares it with us. So she's going to get it by eleven, and then she shares it with us.
Okay. Colonial will set up a conference call for one-thirty to discuss the proposals. The suppliers will hold their pricing until four PM, so you have a window from one-thirty to four.
Okay.
That said, each town will need to identify a signatory who will be available and authorized to sign an electric service agreement with the winning supplier that afternoon sometime roughly between three and five. Okay? So we should probably vote to authorize somebody to do that now. Do you, do you want to be that person?
Sure.
Okay. Then I'd accept a motion to authorize Lisa to be the person to sign the electric service agreement. Okay?
Second.
Yep. Any further comments or questions on that?
Nope.
And we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And then I, I guess I'd leave it to you guys, you know, because as I say, I'll be in New York that, that day. You want to notice a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for what, one-thirty?
I'll do a joint one. I'll just check with them and make sure it's okay. Whoever shows, shows. If there's a quorum, they'll be covered.
Yep. Yeah, and they're only advisory committee, so, you know, if they're, if two people show up or whatever, we have their advice and that's, and you'll have a quorum of the Board of Selectmen, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Right? Because you, you'll be able to be here.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that, that's a Wednesday, too?
That is a Wednesday. Okay. We have a request for a meeting with Heidi and Dana Schwer regarding a leach field. What is the question? What's the?
That's everything I got. That came in today, and they are concerned about a leach field on the lot line between them and the Highway Barn project.
I think they have their house on the market, and I think maybe it's a question.
Is it their leach field or?
No, I'm just guessing.
It, it sounds like they're implying that ours is creeping over a line or on a line, but maybe.
No, what I read, it sounded to me like they were talking about their leach field.
Yeah.
That was how they were.
Because it says it was permitted by the town in nineteen eighty-seven.
They need help, and they also were willing to come tonight, but I said, well, why don't we see?
Have they been to the Board of Health? Because it's the Board of Health that permits those. And if they're looking for plans or record of approval of that, they would go to the Board of Health. Because it sounds, it, it sounds to me what they're looking for is a record of what might have been a variance. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm inferring a lot from two lines here, but if it's quote-unquote right on the lot line, then that suggests to me there was some kind of variance to the lot line. And if they have their property on the market, they're trying to document something, they're probably looking for documentation of that variance.
I'll send them that way.
And that would be in the Board of Health's record. So if that's what they're after, they should really, I think they should talk to the Board of Health.
If in the interest of time, that's not what it is, do you as the highway liaison want to kind of touch base with them and see what's up? I can, I can send them the Board of Health way if that's not what their quick question is, then.
You, you also copied Keith on that, too, did you not?
I think I did. Yep.
Yep. I can.
I mean, do you want to find out whether that's, the question is there?
I will. I will.
Yeah.
Because if.
But if they have a closing, I just want to make sure that it doesn't wait too long if they have, they need more.
Right. Well, I mean, if you find out from them.
Then that's the end of it, yeah.
Then that's the end of it. If not, just email us and we can talk to them. But it does strike me that because they're talking about that it was permitted by the town in nineteen eighty-seven.
There may be some problem with the leach field or something, or the septic?
Again, my, my guess would be, because they say it's right on the lot line and it was approved, that they're looking for documentation of a variance is what it sounds.
True.
But we don't have to guess. Mary will talk to them and they'll tell us that.
No problem.
Alright.
Alright.
I, sorry, I did send to Fran the language and I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So she has it, and I can, I can copy. There were a bunch.
I don't need it as long as you see it.
No, no, no. And, and I had thought, because originally I sent something, I think, on the third of October.
You sent her a list of the wholesalers.
The wholesalers and told her what we needed to do.
Okay.
And.
I wanted to help if there was something you wanted drafted, but I haven't already done it.
I think she's okay because, and, and where it got, when she replied back to me, I realized today she just replied to me. And so when I replied, I thought I was, you know, on the same email chain, but I can forward that to you. Basically, I said, all you need to do is get a statement from them that it is from one of the wholesalers on the list. And then I offered to meet her here in the Board of Selectmen and help her fill out the, the form, so.
Okay.
And I also said to her that because this was a normal one-day pouring license, that it's, you know, it's a local approval. It doesn't have the thirty-day, you know, review by ABCC, et cetera, so.
Okay.
I'll give her a call and see if she has any other questions, but I think we're good.
Yeah, if you want, I can give you the application so that she can make the changes she needs to make, like the location and all the rest of that stuff.
Yeah. Well, my thought was we'd meet here and, you know.
Done. Be great.
Just do it. Okay? That's all that. Okay, and then I, did you get the stuff that I sent today?
No.
I can like write before.
That, that spreadsheet that I copied for everybody, Leanne provided that to everybody.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I have that, and that was part of the basis for it. I sent, I sent an updated one of my reports. It was only about six fifteen or six twenty.
I'm not getting anything out, so maybe something isn't coming in too. There seems to be something wrong with the email.
I did send it. You got it, yeah.
You sent it. I looked at it, yeah.
Yeah.
You did? You got it? I have it hang up here though on my email.
You don't have it?
No, but nothing's come in since four-twenty-six in the afternoon, so there is something wrong.
Okay. Alright, then, yes, that's why you don't. Well, let's talk about that because that's the update. Unfortunately, I didn't bring it. But the, I mean, the main differences between last week's and this week's report was I attended the town hall meeting on Wednesday of last week and talked about.
Can you send it to me and then I'll print it?
I thought you weren't getting anything in.
Not there, but I can go to my own personal email and print it off there. Yeah, I don't know what that's jammed about, but I have a web-based email.
I did get it, but I didn't happen to see it.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, what, what it is really simple. It, it's not, wasn't particularly good news, but it was simple. To the figures that I had indicated before, I went over them at the town hall meeting. And I was told that the figure for the curatorial building is thirty-five and not twenty-five for materials on an undiscounted basis.
I saw that on there.
Yeah, and they also suggested that if we were having a special town meeting to add twenty-five hundred for contingencies for the, you know, the last putting of things together when they come in and do the testing of the elevator and do the final connections with the electricity, et cetera. The theory that, you know, it probably won't be needed, but we don't want to.
We don't want to be short.
We don't want to be short. So it, it basically then added twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the unfunded figure. And I, you know, the, I altered the report to, you know, to reflect that, but that's, you know, I mean, that's the new, the new figure. So I think what we need to do is between now and two weeks from now, we need to decide how we're going to fund that. I think, you know, we've talked about a number of, a number of possibilities. I think we also need to talk to, to Keith because we have spent seven thousand of his original twenty thousand for municipal buildings. And he does say that there are some boiler problems, et cetera, that need to be done. So I think we need to sit down with him and figure out what we need as a total additional figure to municipal buildings. I had suggested before to do this under municipal building expense because special articles stick there. And if we don't, you know, this will all be spent, you know, for July first of next year. And it means if you don't spend anything, it will go back to, it'll go back to the town. We could do it as a combination of special article and that, but, you know, we need to think about how we want to do that. I certainly welcome anybody's thoughts on that, but. The.
Thank you.
The figure that we have is basically forty-six thousand dollars on this figure. That's the unfunded figure.
Okay.
Okay? It's forty-five and very short change, below forty-six.
Mary, mine's will be forty-six.
Yeah. So that's.
Alrighty.
And, you know, so we, you know, before we close things for the Annual Town Meeting, we need to make a decision. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it, or you want to think about it between now and next week and talk about it then? But I think this is, this is finally a, a final figure.
This is done. Because every time you do this, it gets worse. I don't want, I don't want any more.
I know. I know. Well, no, and I mean, I thought it was done last time, but, you know, I went, I went and I, you know, I had talked about it the previous week. So before I finalized it, I went through everything with everybody because, you know, I mean, this has been floating around for a while. And, and I got that additional input, but I said, you know, this is, this is it, you know. I'm not, I'm not going to ask any more questions. I think I've asked enough, and if somebody hasn't spoken up, that's, it's their fault at this point, yeah?
So do we want to have Keith come in at some point?
Or somebody needs to talk to Keith.
Or I can talk to Keith. That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. I didn't get, and I had forgotten because I was, I was away for Thursday through Monday night of this, this last week. I still need to get some figures from Leanne about the monthly run rate and an indication of the line items that they impact. Because I think that we will have to also put some money in part-time wages that won't be paid out of their revolving account.
Part-time wages of?
For Leanne.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, because we're assuming that until they're up and running.
Right.
Or Steve Bradley, whenever, if there was ever event for the rest of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it was budgeted really with Steve in mind, and we're paying Leanne out of it. So, you know, we, we have to make an adjustment to that as well. The other items, probably not the, the oil, we, we haven't been spending all of, and there doesn't seem to be any, you know, major spike in oil prices, but that one, I think we, I think the maximum exposure that we have on that is four thousand, as I understand that. But I think part-time, part-time wages, we, you know, we probably need to make an adjustment to as well at the special town meeting. But I will have that, you know, figure next week so we can, okay?
Okay.
I'll be. I'd be glad to take the draft. I'll just report and hand it off to everybody because it's been.
Any progress with National Grid or?
No, I'm still waiting for an answer from them. I would have reported that. Yep.
They're trying to get power up in Puerto Rico. They're trying to get power up in Puerto Rico.
Yeah, really. No, no, I'm, I'm just looking to get some money off the top of that. I do think that these figures are, you know, worst-case figures. And I would expect that with these figures, we're going to be giving some back.
Hopefully, yeah.
Mainly some of the contingencies, and I, I think that the thirty-five, you know, if there are donated or discounted materials, we can expect some money to come off of that, so.
I did see a National Grid truck out in front of the old town hall. I think it was Friday as I was leaving town. Not for them.
No, not for this.
Not for this, huh?
No. Alright. Okay. Alright, so. Let me just take a quick flip through the miscellaneous correspondence. Oh, yes, we have unpaid bills to submit to.
ACG.
Yeah, it's a special.
Oh, yes. No, that's, that's the fire chief.
Yeah, the fire chief. That one should probably have been on the agenda for.
Oh, I didn't know they took any action. I have dropped it into a bucket warrant that I'm working on now.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's, it'll have to go on the warrant and, yeah. Okay?
Did you want it delivered?
I'm just flipping through.
My, my thing about this was more, do you, does this green folder with miscellaneous correspondence serve any kind of purpose? Lisa at one time wondered if it would be better to have an electronic version of everything, drag and drop into a folder and everyone could just look at stuff?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, a lot of the stuff, the stuff that we've been copied on and looked at by email anyway. So I would say, personally, I would say anything that we get via email, there's no need to put in the miscellaneous correspondence.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Save some trees. It'd be awesome.
Well, save me a lot of time.
Yeah, no.
But I, but it is, I thought maybe only slightly useful in that it might jog your memory at a meeting or to make sure that everyone's getting the same thing. Sometimes when I type L, I'm not pulling up Lisa, but most of the time I do.
Yeah, I don't think we'll take that risk.
Okay.
I think we'll take that risk. Yeah.
I can tell you I, I do not go through that file ever.
I know, and no one has for a while. So if it doesn't serve a purpose anymore.
I, I would love to take something off here.
That would be great.
Yep, no, I think that's. Yeah, so my way of thinking, this should be, you know, fundamentally junk mail, you know.
I can make that much smaller.
Stuff that is not actionable, you know, and there's no need to put in this, anything that we've all gotten by email.
Okay.
And hopefully, Tom is going to get us all our separate emails and you can make a group.
He was supposed to give me this today. It already exists.
Okay. So you can just do a group where you automatically.
Oh, so we, we have emails at this point?
Yes. You are going to have Gmail-based.
I love it.
My town, our town of Berlin.
That's great.
Email. Yep.
Yeah, because I'm getting nervous about the amount of Berlin email that's on my employer's email at this point. So.
And then we could possibly do our own Google Calendar.
Rather than the paper one. That would make me really happy.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't even put that there.
Sorry, paper?
Calendar, so we know what's coming up. I can pop you.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yeah.
And I'd much rather see that on a thing that I could just pull in.
And then maybe you can add stuff to it. So on the fly, if you need to add stuff to it, you guys could.
No, I think that's fine. Excellent.
Well, it's cool. Like I said, I actually have a select for a calendar for my stuff that I could actually.
You overlay over your own personal.
And I could share that with your calendar.
That's fine. That would be good.
Alright. Anything else before we go to sort of Selectmen's updates?
On the miscellaneous? No?
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to go first.
Well, you saw most of what I've been doing this week.
Yep. Yes.
I was wondering if you want to, Mary had, there used to be a liaison to the town man, or the town report committee. And I was wondering if you wanted to appoint me that.
Eloise told me that today. I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either.
A town what?
There was actually a liaison to the town. There was actually a liaison to the town report committee. And since I'm already.
Oh, town report, okay, gotcha.
Sort of fulfilling that role.
Yeah, I don't ever remember that there was one.
Hillary says, before my town.
Must have been before mine, too, because I don't ever remember.
Really? Okay, so this has been a long time ago.
I don't remember your mother ever doing that. I don't think, I think she would have done it.
Well, I think we've all sort of agreed that.
I don't think David Marble would have done it, and I know I didn't do it, so, yeah. It's been a long time.
But I'm dealing with this issue right now.
Yeah, so we don't have to visit the past, we can look to the future.
Right.
In which Ms. Wisaki will be the liaison.
Can we add this to the liaison list?
Yeah.
By general acclamation. All right. Okay.
Are you all set?
That was, yeah.
That's it?
It's really.
Okay.
When I said it took me a little time on the town report, I was not kidding. But have you looked at it?
I did look at a couple of pieces of it, and I thought, I certainly thought it was much more attractive than, yeah.
Okay. We, I believe, have finished our duties as the superintendent search committee. We have sent forward three candidates for the school committee to interview.
Great.
Probably towards the end of the month, maybe, I think it was mentioned, October 24th. And I do have copies of resumes, if anybody's interested. Mary could send them to us if anybody's interested.
Sure.
You want me to mention the names, or?
Is it public?
Yes, it is now.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yes, unless you had them confidentially or something and it hadn't been released, no?
At one point it was, right?
Yeah, up until the school committee met, I think on Friday at 8:00 a.m., they had a meeting where they made it public.
Okay.
The candidates. One of the candidates is Dr. Elizabeth Zelinski. She is presently a superintendent at King Philip Regional Schools in Norfolk, and they have the same sort of setup as we do, where they have King Philip as their regional high school for three towns, and then they have, each have a superintendent for their elementary. So it's a little different, but it's still.
But there are three of them instead of two, yes.
Three, yes.
So there are four districts in that case. The regional district and each of, yeah, okay.
Yep.
So she'd be very familiar with them all.
Yes, she, she is very familiar. Jeffrey Zhanghai, who is presently the assistant superintendent.
You started at the back of the alphabet or something?
I know, really. Zelinski, Zhanghai.
Wow, it's very rare that you see that, yes. Anyway, go ahead.
He's assistant superintendent of learn, learning and teaching at Tantaskwa. Been there since 2012. And then there was Dr. Glenn Brand, who was the superintendent in Acton, Boxborough.
Uh-huh, okay.
So.
Great.
Had a great, great bunch of people that we interviewed, and it was really a tough decision the last evening. Went a little long.
Well, thank you for doing that.
This is kind of what you did all last week, right?
Yes, it was like almost, it was three nights out of the week that I was out for that.
Because he was really sick.
He, I believe, was getting a little tired by the end, when we were going on and on and on, couldn't decide. And he, and he had to pick up and leave at one point, coughing and hacking, and so it was, it was tough. Cliff Laporte.
Oh, okay.
The chair of the regional school committee. Hopefully, he's feeling better.
Yeah.
After a long weekend.
All right.
So I.
And the dispatch hire.
Yes, and we have, I believe, the Ross Klun will be starting work at Devon's on October 16th. They have begun the audit, gathering data for the, for the audit for the dispatch, for the Devon's dispatch district. I didn't write too many notes. They're starting negotiations with the union, the dispatcher. And I don't know, things are starting to look up.
Good.
So we'll keep you posted.
And the audit stuff is?
The audit stuff is starting, so just starting.
Okay.
And you're happy with the new candidate?
Gathering data, I'm very happy with the candidate. I was part of that search process, too. I think he'll be very good.
Good.
So.
Yeah, and I think I also recited most of the stuff I did. I went to the town hall, did some more work on this. I did talk to Fran. I facilitated, took part in a conference call with Lynn Ryan about the Capes of Berlin with town council, and town council set out the various alternatives that are, you know, available. The meeting for that, they're going to close the hearings tomorrow. They may or may not take a vote on one of the, on one of the possibilities they have. I think 40 days from.
Right.
Closing the, the hearing to do that. I was asked to put together a little bit more pointed and detailed a letter on our interest in that in terms of recreational land, which I will do tomorrow, and I can circle around, but basically, just, you know, very much following the themes that we have in our, in our selectmen's letter, but focusing more on the sort of record and interest of the town and that land as recreational. So by, if, by your leave, I could do that, I can, I will copy you guys on what goes out.
Great.
I mean, it's nothing, I don't think it would be controversial, it's just, as I say, a little more detail. The interest, I will, I'll attend, of course, tomorrow night.
I was planning on it, too.
Yeah.
I'll be at town management.
Across the store, across the hall, I mean.
All right. And I'm talking, talking to Mr. Texera on Thursday night. And I did click when he sent me the one, because I, you know, I hadn't seen his email, and when he sent it to me, I, you know, I clicked to, you know, for the who's, and I don't think he sent one to me, because I didn't have one, but anyway, we're gonna meet, he's gonna come over to the house on Thursday night, and we'll do that interview there.
Emails, web disclaimer.